Good evening. I'd like to call the Pitt County Planning Board for the May 2023 meeting to order, and at this time we'll have our roll call. Ms. Tabitha?
Present.
Don Brown?
Present.
Naomi Buck?
Present.
Molly Holdeman?
Present.
Steve Little?
Present.
Charles McGlonehorn. And Mr. Chairman, we were notified that David Davenport, Thompson Torbs, Lyman Hardy, and R.J. Hemby will not be present. And we're currently waiting on Charles McGlonehorn.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. So that being said, we will go ahead and keep going with our meeting. And at this time, I'd like for you to stand, and as we have a prayer by Mr. Don Brown, we'd say, following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
Let us pray. The heavenly, most graceful Father, we hum a hymn out this afternoon, Lord. We ask you to bless our board and bless the ones that are not present, Lord, so we'll be able to govern ourselves according tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Let us all say amen.
Amen. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, as we do start our meeting, I would call on Josh. I believe we do have an administrative matter that we need to talk about or mention.
Good evening, members of the board. In your packet, and I think all of y'all were emailed as well, that Mr. John Landry had to resign from this board after last month's meeting due to change in residency. So we accepted his resignation request, and at Monday's meeting, this past Monday's meeting, the Board of Commissioners has appointed a new member to the board. Her name is Mandy Johnson Anderson. She will be replacing Mr. Landry as a representative from District A, which covers Districts One and Two. So she will be joining us, hopefully, at our next meeting in the place of Mr. Landry. Since, I'll give it back to you.
All right. Good deal, and we will welcome Ms. Johnson Anderson at our next meeting, which is a good thing. All right. We're glad to have her coming aboard. We're gonna skip on down our agenda to the informational items while we're still waiting one of our board members to get here, okay? So Jonas?
All right. So informational items that have been included in your agenda packet for tonight, just a follow-up on two rezonings. The first one being the Environmental Resource Management Conditional District Rezoning. That also went to the Board of Commissioners this past Monday night. That request was approved to move forward by the Board of Commissioners. If you'll remember, that was for the natural gas line facility down in the Calico area of the county. Also, under informational items included in your packet is the Susan Martin Conditional District Rezoning request. That also went before the Board of Commissioners this past Monday, and that request, if you remember, was a split vote for the Planning Board. So there was no recommendation coming from the Planning Board, and the Board of Commissioners voted to deny that rezoning request, or conditional zoning request. So just to update you on those two. The final, well, second-to-last item under informational items was the proposed improvements to NC 43 South. That was a request that didn't necessarily come before you guys, but it was a request by DOT to get input from the county regarding safety improvements to three intersections along NC 43 South. The first intersection was for Cox Crossing, which is Ivy Road and NC 43 South. The Department of Transportation was seeking input on putting a stoplight at that intersection to reduce the number of crashes, and that intersection was identified as a high-crash area along NC 43 South. Also, moving further south down NC 43 at the Chicade intersection, that being Stokes Town, St. Johns, and NC 43 South, looking at putting another stoplight at that intersection as well due to the high-traffic volume during school hours and crashes that have been reported and seen at that intersection. If you travel further south from there, down to Calico at 43 and NC 102, they were not looking at putting a stoplight in there. And I gotta check my terminology real quick just to make sure I tell you the right thing. It's referred to as an RCI, Reduced Conflict Intersection. And we have RCI intersections out here on NC 43 North, right up as Fifth Street turns into NC 43, and that's the bulbouts where you're not allowed to make necessarily a left-hand turn. You have to go right and then make a left-hand turn with the bulbout coming back to go left. And so that intersection was proposed in the Calico area at NC 102 and NC 43 South, and there was some discussion at the Commissioners level, but ultimately, the board voted to adopt the resolution supporting all three of those intersection improvements. So there was concern over school buses and truck traffic making that U-turn, so to speak, in the bulbout was the concern there. So anyway, just to bring up speed on some projects occurring from DOT and the county's jurisdiction. The last thing under informational items is the Departmental Monthly Report. It's included in your agenda packet as well, so you can see all the good activities that we have going on in the department, as well as... Well, yeah, just the activities that we have going on. So at this time, if there are any questions regarding any of the informational items, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions from the board? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jonas.
Mr. Chairman, we now have a quorum.
Good deal. Thank you, Mr. McGlonehorn, for joining us, okay?
I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
That's a long story, but I apologize.
That's fine. That's fine. At this time, I will open our meeting to public addresses to the board, and I do not show where I have anyone signed up to do public addresses to the board.
Yeah, we need to approve the amendments as well.
I'll back up then, see? That's why I like having Tab here, because she keeps me on the straight and narrow. So the Chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the amendments of the last meeting.
So moved, Don Brown.
I have a motion by Mr. Brown, and a second by?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McGlonehorn. Thank you. Any questions, comments, before we vote? All in favor of the motion? Might have been known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign? Approval is passed. All right. So now, can I go back and open the board for public addresses to the board? Seeing none signed up, I'll turn around and close the public hearing to the board. That being said, we'll go right into our rezoning request. Eric?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just get PowerPoint back to where this needs to be real quick. Thank you. So we do have one rezoning request for you tonight by George Lee Shaver, Jr. The request is to rezone approximately 12.8 acres of property. It's owned by George and Claudia Savage. Its parcel number is 16993 and 7863. It's located right at, kind of at the intersection of Spatesy Farm Road and Picosin Road. The frontage is mainly on Picosin. The request is to go from Rural Agricultural to Rural Agricultural Conditional District, and that's to allow oversized vehicle parking commercial. This is the location of the site. You see, it's right there at that intersection between Picosin Road and Spatesy Farm Road, just west of Winterville and the NC 11 Bypass. Now, this is pictures of the site itself. As you see, there already are some trucks parked out there. Just to give a little background information, and I'll kind of illustrate a little bit more when we show the existing land use and some of the other maps we've got. There was, the property did locate a business on the property back around 2015, 2016 timeframe. There were a number of storage containers out there. Mr. Shaver is now operating his business out there for the truck parking. We were not aware of the container business being out there and all those units being stored, at least not until the end of last year, when Mr. Shaver came in for some permits for his business. So that property was being utilized for a commercial use without proper permits. But again, this is the current property you see there, where some of the existing trucks and trailers are parked. Just more of the property here, the fencing to the right. There's some area that's being utilized for, by Roberts Company, that are storing some equipment out there. You see, he's already got some heavy equipment on the site itself. This is the driveway that's leading into the site from Picosin Road. This is on Picosin, if you're looking to the west, and this is back on Picosin Road, heading back towards the east of the site. These are adjacent properties that are on Picosin. These are right at, the one in the, sort of the forefront of the picture is the one that's right at the driveway, and these are on the other side of the driveway there. This is on the Spatesy Farm roadside. This is a driveway that leads into the property. They're not, according to the sketch plan that was submitted, they're not utilizing that for the driveway for the site, but you can see the site from that location. And then this is looking to the north on Spatesy Farm Road, and then to the south, and then some, also some other adjacent existing residences out there on both sides of the road. As you see, on the, the property is within the Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan Study Area. As you recall, our new comprehensive land use plan envisioned in Pitt County still designates the Southwest Bypass as well as the NC 43 South corridor, since those plans are relatively new. Those recommendations do still apply, so that's how we review it, is under those plans or that Southwest Bypass Plan rather than the new envisioned Pitt County plan. But under this, it's designated as agricultural, and you can see just to the southeast of the site is the edge of the Rinston Historical District. It's in that sort of hash mark. The agricultural designation is devoted to agricultural uses, which can include forestry, crop production, livestock rearing, and pasture land, and policies could include restrictions on density or size of subdivisions in key agricultural areas. So that's the definition that's provided for that district in the plan. The plan also has a policy recommendation. It's land use policy recommendation number two, and that's to protect agriculture in the study area. And it states to, that only very low-density, small-scale residential development should be encouraged in those agricultural areas that are west of the bypass. This is the existing land use map, and you can kind of see on there, you can see the containers that were previously on the site. Most, a lot of those have been moved off, so it's not as densely packed with those containers as it is now, but there are some, there was some activity going on there. What you can see is that it's sort of surrounding the property, and that gold color is all the residential, so it does have residential that fronts along Picosin's adjacent to it, as well as along Spatesy Farm Road. And then the remainder in the area is primarily agricultural. The zoning map, you see, is predominantly rural agricultural. There is, there is a small general commercial site there at the corner. I think that's an old store, but I don't believe it's operating as a store anymore from what we can tell. So again, the request would stay as rural agricultural. That's primarily intended to accommodate very low-density residential uses, associated public institutional uses, low-intensity commercial uses, and agriculture-related industrial uses that are interspersed through areas that are principally rural in nature. And again, zoning ordinance for this type of use, remember, a couple months ago, we did go through with a text amendment to establish this use, and as part of that, it put it in the permitted use table as requiring a conditional district for the RA District. So he would, in order to get this approved, he does have to go through this process as a conditional zoning district. And then again, that allows for the approval of a specific use with reasonable conditions to ensure it's compatible with the surrounding properties. And again, that proposed use is that oversized vehicle parking. These are the requirements in the zoning ordinance that were approved recently. And again, Mr. Shaver is the one who also applied for that amendment. Again, it shows where it's required, is a conditional district in the RA District. There's use separation between adjoining residential properties and from any church, residence, school, or public institutional, institution. There's minimum area requirements, screening, as well as fencing requirements. The noise, has to comply with the noise ordinance. They have to improve their parking services, or at least have them graded and properly drained, so that they minimize dust and erosion. And there are some prohibited activities, such as storing any kind of wrecked vehicles or junk materials. They also can't have any fuel cells or any automotive repair. So this is the sketch plan that was submitted. You see pretty much the hashed area there, that's the area that he's, will be utilizing for the parking area. He does show some existing fencing. Again, that's where the heavy equipments were parked to the western side of the property, as well as some proposed fencing and security lighting along the northern side. There's also an office that's proposed out there, and there is also an existing cemetery that is located sort of in the middle, but it's on a separate parcel, so it's not part of this request, or it's not included in these properties that are proposed for the district. So our staff recommendation, again, because of its designation as agricultural in the Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan, it's not consistent with that plan. And again, per the policy and policy recommendations of that plan, only very low-density, small-scale residential development should be encouraged in those agricultural areas west of the bypass. Staff also finds it's not reasonable and not in the public interest, because there are some potential negative impacts on the surrounding residential properties. Again, it's adjacent to, within close proximity to several residences along Picosin Road and Spatesy Farm Road, which could all be negatively impacted by traffic, noise, and lighting. So staff does recommend denial of the request. We'd like now entertain public comments, and the board will then make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, and they're scheduled to hold a public hearing on June 26th at 6:00 p.m. And before we open to public comments, Mr. Chair, we do want to point out a few things that are in your packet. Mr. Shaver did submit some letters of support, as well as some petitions, which are all included in your packet. There's a letter from the police chiefs from Greenville, Winterville, and Aiden, as well as about 10 pages of petitions, or signed petitions that he submitted. Also in your packet, there's a letter of opposition from one of the neighbors, and also one that came in this week before this meeting that we couldn't get in your packet. There is another one we received, and they cited several things that they're concerned about, namely, an unsightly fire hazard, drainage problems, unsightly views, noise, headlight disturbance, just decreased property values, increased chances of crime, roadway deterioration due to the trucks, and also some concerns about that cemetery that's located in the middle of the site. They also noted that they're requesting rezoning after being in business in the area since before 2016, and parking several acres of trailers on the property before it was ever rezoned. So with that, Mr. Chair, we'd like to open up for public comments. I believe we have several folks that are signed up to speak.
We do. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Eric, I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
When we voted last time, I did not realize that this was not permitted already. I thought the landowner had gotten permission to put the trailers on the land. I did not know that.
No, sir. There's not been any, we had not issued any kind of approval through office.
Okay. Thank you.
At this time, I will open this meeting for some public comments to this issue, and we do have some folks that have signed up to speak on this issue, and I would just mention to each one of you and remind each one of you that as you come forward, we need you to just state your name and your address, and the fact that we allow three minutes for each person to speak, okay? That being said, Ms. Louise Blake?
My name is Louise Blake. I live at 1665 Picosin Road, which is at the intersection of Picosin and Spatesy Farm Road. One of my concerns is that I chose a place in the country because I wanted peace and quiet, and big trucks and large equipment are not peaceful and are not quiet. And that's one of my main objections to changing it from agricultural. Plus, those same vehicles disturb the pavement, and we've just had some fresh pavement on Spatesy Farm Road last year, and it's a pleasure to drive on it. And I, since I live at the intersection, I know how the sides of the roads get all beat up by the big vehicles, and that's a hindrance. In fact, in front of my house, right at the intersection, there's a drop about that deep, which is hazardous when you think about vehicles driving there. So those are two of my concerns, and I thank you. I've never been to one of these before. This is a new experience, and I thank you for the opportunity to express myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. Mr. George Shaver?
George Shaver, I live on Eastwood Lane in Winterville, which is approximately a mile and a half from this location on Picosin. This has been a journey, I tell you. Mr. Savage called me. I opened a parking lot in Winterville on Four Lines Road back during COVID. I think it was 2020, and within two months, the parking lot was full. I have 60 trucks that park there. We have a lot of trucks in this county where truck drivers come home, they have nowhere to park, because Greenville, Aiden, and Winterville have ordinances. They cannot park inside the city limits. So I started a parking lot. I own a trucking company. I was having issues where my drivers could park. I parked on Mr. Savage's land for almost six years, me and five other truck drivers. So when my lot got full, Mr. Savage and I were talking, and he said he had sold his business and his land was available. Was I interested in it? And I said, yes, sir. So I called the county to get permits to put lighting out there, put electricity out there, so I could have security cameras like I do at my other lot. That's when Eric told me, you can't do it. You can't park commercial trucks on this piece of property. So we had a meeting with Eric, and I said, okay, Eric, what do I have to do? And he said, well, the simplest thing, there's two things you could do. You can file for a commercial to change it, or you can file a text amendment to the residential or to the rural agriculture. So we filed that change. We came in here before you, and you approved it. I went before the county commissioners. They approved it. Now I'm being told I can't do it. I'm just lost. I've seen four other properties on 13 get approved at these board meetings, and they're southwest of the corridor, on a very busy highway. I brought that up to Eric Monday when we spoke, and he said, well, if you were out there, we would probably approve you. That doesn't make sense to me. Do you know how hard it is to get a tractor-trailer truck out on 13? It's hard enough for a car to get out there in that traffic. Where we're located now, all the containers are almost gone. The containers and trailers that are left on the backside of the property are all personal property of Mr. Savage. That don't have anything to do with my business. We have 20 designated parking spaces and a fenced-in area that Roberts Welding uses. Roberts Welding is one of the largest employers in Winterville. They need space. All of my truck drivers, these truck drivers are not in every day. You can say, some of them don't come in by every four weeks for three or four nights. So it's not increasing the traffic flow, and the road got damaged from dump trucks. There's two sand mines in the area. So I mean, I would really appreciate you if you could support us. We, all, the truck drivers, every one of them that park there are local residents. Two of them live on Picosin Road, right there at the entrance of the driveway. But I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Consideration, please.
Any?
I just have a question.
Okay.
You said, Mr. Shaver?
Yes, sir.
You said Roberts was the largest employer in Winterville?
Yes, sir.
Are you aware that they've gone out of business?
Well, they're a new company. They got 500 employees.
Well, I haven't seen any vehicles at their, at their space there.
They, they moved to Lory Ellis Road.
Okay.
They're still in business.
So Lory Ellis Road?
Yes, sir.
Not on Four Lines Road, though?
No. Mr., um, he sold that property.
Okay.
Mr. Roberts sold that property on Four Lines.
Where do you park your trucks on Four Lines Road?
Next door to where Roberts Welding used to be, the old FedEx compound, 177 Four Lines.
Mr. Shaver, how many, how many businessmen and women are trucking in Pitt County who live here and need to park their vehicles? Would you, can you estimate?
Ma'am, there's probably 40 parking at Burlington right now, and Greenville Police Department don't know what to do with them, because they don't know where for them to park. I've got 60 at my lot on Four Lines. We've got 20 spaces designated, and they're neat spaces. They've got numbers on them. I go out there every morning and every afternoon and clean the lot, make sure the grass is mowed. We do everything we can to be environmentally safe, and we do everything we can to be friendly with the neighbors. I mean, there, the way those trucks go in and out, there's no, somebody said about light, lights interfering with property, that's not true. If you come out there and look, the way that, when the trucks go out, there's an empty field over there. The lights aren't bothering anybody. And like I said, the two ladies that live on the corner park in our parking lot. We have 20 designated spots right now. We have 18 up there, and they're all local people. The petition I gave you had 88 signatures on it, and a lot of them are from that area within a mile of that parking lot. I live within a mile and a half of that parking lot.
So Mr. Shaver, you're saying that this parking lot you're proposing is only a maximum of 20 slots?
We were gonna designate 40 to 60 spots, but currently, we only have 20 spots. And like I said, sir...
It's a big piece of land. It's a big piece of land.
And we're only using about half of it, though. We're only using about half of that land. We're not using, if you look at the aerial photographs, there was, there was 1,300 containers and over 300 trailers stored on that property one time. We don't plan to do anything like that, but we, there's a desperate need, and like I said, all these are Pitt County residents. There's 88 on that petition. The chief of police supported it. Winterville, like I said, they're one of the largest employers in Winterville. They need space. I understand there's residents there, but we have nowhere else to go.
Okay.
I have one other question.
Other questions?
Yeah. Can I ask one other question? I need a little primer on trucking. What are the, I mean, are there regular business hours of when customers will come in and park their vehicles there?
Oh, ma'am, some of our truck drivers leave at 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning. They come back around 4:00 or 5:00 in the afternoon. They got, most truck drivers, you got 14-hour day, 11 hours of drive. About, of our 18 out there right now, only four come in and out daily. The rest of them stay gone. Six of them stay gone all week and come home on the weekend. They come in Friday night, they stay home Friday, Saturday, they leave Sunday night or early Monday morning. They're only there on weekends. Three ladies, or the two ladies that park, that live right there, they only come home about every four weeks. They stay gone for a month. So there's never 20 trucks there right now. There might be five trucks tonight, six trucks tomorrow night, 18 trucks on the weekend. They have to have somewhere to park, so come home to see their families. And that's all we're asking. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tommy Savage.
Tommy Savage, six fourteen forty-three, eleven eighty Pecoson Road. I've operated a business in that place and serviced this community for fifty-four years. Fifty-four years. I've never had a complaint. Well, let me, let me say this. Yes, I did. The subdivision across the road in front of me complained about some scrap I had out there, and I put a pile of excess dirt come off the job site. They said they didn't like it. I've been there since November of sixty-nine. That farm was farmed up until about fifteen years ago. Did they not see that stuff across the road when they bought their land to put the house on? And it only took one slight conversation to end it. And I was nice. I'm nice until somebody pushes my button. They come over there and said, we can't have this. I said, I think y'all need to go get your glasses checked and check your deed and see when you bought your piece of property. Because I've been here, and I'm gonna stay here. And if you don't like it, I'll go in the woods and get a whole lot of junk and bring it to the road so you can see it. But I says, no, I'm leaving it like it is. And I expect y'all to deal with it. It's the last I heard of it. And we get along fine. And there's trucks, farm equipment, everything, all up and down the road. Nobody says anything about it now. Some of the people that come in from up north don't like it on kind of the farm equipment. What are we gonna do? Tell the farmers they can't ride on the state road? See, this lady was talking about the big equipment on the road, the big trucks on the road. I don't think people in this society knows how important something like a truck is. Everything you people have on tonight came in here on a truck. This desk came in here on a truck. This building came in here on a truck. We can't do without them. That's it. And Mr. Ted Salls, at one time, they were towing some trucks and giving some tickets. He said, that makes me, for lesser words, a butthole in town. He said, I'm trying to look after the town and keep the town safe. He said, these parking lots are full. They're throwing tires into parking lots, changing oil into parking lots. We got to stop it somehow. And he's waiting for George and I to go over there and tell him we are wide open for business. And then he's gonna shut the town down.
Thank you, sir.
I need some more time, if I could get it, please.
I need to hold right now because of ones that we have. I need to hold to three minutes tonight, okay?
Okay.
We respect, we respect what you said, and, and I do, we hear you.
Okay. But it, it'd take me about five or ten minutes to get across what I need to get across because people just don't, they don't understand. They don't understand. And as George says, there's no lights that bother anybody. We had the utilities to put them up and put them up in, I don't know the word for it, in regulations for all light damage for anybody in the community. Now, later on, can I come back, question the gentleman over here on some stuff he put up?
The gentleman?
What's your name? Eric.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. I, look, I can't remember names. I can't. And since COVID come and I got that, I'm worse.
Listen, and I appreciate you coming around here, but right now, I'm gonna ask you to respect what we have to do, and then we'll move forward, okay?
That's right. And if I could, I would like to help afterwards. Thank you.
You'll have to forgive me on this next signature. Is this Martin? Okay, sorry. Martin Moran?
Moran.
Moran, okay.
My name is Martin Moran, and I've been a resident of Pecoson Road for over two decades. My wife and I bought our property outright. We would look for this specific property. And when I say outright, we paid cash. We worked hard. We saved our money. And we chose where we live because of the way it was, the nice country living. We have a very nice diverse neighborhood. Everyone gets along. I mean, it's been a pleasure to live there, up until recently. While I respect Mr. Shaver and Mr. Savage, they work hard, they created jobs. Truckers are a necessity. Without truckers, we wouldn't eat. Without farmers, we wouldn't eat. And that's the other thing. Agricultural is a necessary, is being decimated by businesses. And while we could stand here and tell you and describe to you what is going on, this is what we see out of our window that we paid and worked hard for every day. Every day, we see this. We have, you know, pools, backyards that we've built. This, and, oh, by the way, these pictures are from today. This is a pile of I don't know what metals that went flying when the storm just hit not too long ago, which is hazardous. We have children live in this area. My grandson plays in this area, my nieces and nephews. And I did this only so that you guys could see. We worked hard for our property, you know? And we've built onto our property, we've made it the way we wanted, you know? I myself am a business owner as well. And anything that I do, I rent storage units. I find where the city has ordinance for business commercial. Whereas when we purchased our land, agricultural, that's why we purchased it. We were told that the land wouldn't perk, and that's why we, uh, we thought we'd never have anything behind us. Neighbors, that's fine. It's residential as well. But this, I understand there's a need for it, but it's, it's like, you know, just forget about the neighborhood. Our property value will plummet it. My niece is a real estate agent. She said, you'd be lucky to get pennies on a dollar. And why should we have to pick up and move? All my memories are there. I raised my son there, who was recently killed. He was a soldier. And I, and I, and I'm supposed to just pack up and leave everything behind? My wife and I worked really hard for everything that we have. We respect the board's decision, but these lines were made for a reason in terms of, you know, this is agricultural, this is commercial. And we knew that when we purchased our property, with respect, they knew that as well. And to just start putting things out there, lights, how can you tell me how I feel when I look out of my window and I'm sitting in my hot tub or my pool that I paid a lot of money for and I worked hard for, and these lights are glaring in my face, you know? And lights not bothering anyone? This is two days ago. My Ring camera is activated by the truck lights that go by. I can show you. I have a memory chip that has hundreds of trucks over the years that go by. We've had to put up security systems, motion lights, alarm systems. We didn't have any of that before. Heck, some of us would leave our doors open and go visit with each other. It's a beautiful neighborhood. And as I said, in respect to their living, they have to make a living to feed their family. In respect to the truck jobs, but there's a time and there's a place for that. And that zone has already been made. So I just ask that you take the neighborhood and the neighborhood's economy and everything that everyone's here has worked hard for into account when you make your decision because that ruins us. And we were there first. I mean, I'm not just saying it that way. It was because when we signed our lease agreement, when we paid money for everything, not our lease agreement, our deed, this is what we were signing under these particular conditions.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I do have a question, sir.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Moran.
Yes, sir.
At what time did you, what date was it, or approximate year, that you purchased your land to build your home on?
Two thousand and two.
And the commercial property, the storage facility, as it was at that time, was already in existence. Is that correct?
No, I said that I stole my stuff in a storage unit that's.
I'm sorry.
It was back in land at that time.
Was it?
Yeah. There was nothing.
It was not being used for the container business?
No, sir, there was nothing there at all. Nothing there at all up until about three or four years ago. So for sixteen beautiful years, we had what we paid for, the country, the, the beautiful ambiance of it. It's all ruined. I feel like even when we take pictures and we send them to our family, they're like, where were you at? It, it's unfortunate, you know? I understand there's a need, but would you want this in your backyard? Would you want to look at this every day and just know that you worked hard? And, you know, we leave all our work in the city. When we come home, that's our, our little castle. Just because they're double wides, you know, I don't know if that has anything to do with it, but we, we have rights as well. And we also, you know, have worked hard for everything that we have. It's why I respect that. But when we come home, you want to find that favorite lounge chair that placed on the couch and watch your TV, and all you hear is the rumbling of these trucks. I have a huge TV with surround sound, and I could still hear that over there. It shakes everything. It's just like, it's like living by an airport. And as I was told, if we even try to attempt to sell our property, which we don't really want to do, you're not gonna get anything for it. The value has plummeted. Even, anybody comes to see that from the road, you can see this. Some of these pictures were taken in the road, and you could see the stuff behind where we live. Respectively, I just ask the board to really take all this into consideration. You're talking about families that have lived there for decades.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Ms. Haddock?
Mr. Haddock.
Mr. Haddock, okay. Landre?
Lindre.
Lindre, I'll get it right. See, you gotta help me.
My name is Lindre Haddock. I'm at one seven one one Pecoson Road. I'm originally from Greene County, law-abiding citizen. I love people, love the Lord. And I'm a family person. So my home was the first home out there, believe it or not. Bought it in two thousand, June of two thousand. So it was definitely wonderful. I could ride my four-wheeler. I can play with my dogs out there and run and play and just do whatever I wanted to. And I just feel real comfortable, like enjoy a warm, felt place to just settle at. So, you know, everything was great, just like Mr. Moran was saying. Basically, until Mr. Savage came and put a bunch of containers right behind our home. Made me feel helpless. As a man, it is horrible when you feel helpless, like there's nothing you can do about it. And to hear him come at me in ways that belittle me, like he was well above any human being and citizen, it made me feel like mud, like there's no, oh, they were just gonna put a bunch of mobile homes back here and turn it into a trailer park anyway, like I'm nothing. I love human beings. Everybody is something. Everybody is special. God loves all of us, and we are all God's children. And His children is way more important than some trucks coming in and out. After he done that, I put a privacy fence up, six foot. Guess what? Now that the eighteen-wheelers come in, I can see the eighteen-wheelers parked there. A lot of us have swimming pools. Y'all are some beautiful people here. I can't imagine y'all in my swimming pool with your bathing suits on and truck drivers back there in the back having a wonderful peep show. Nice. Can you imagine all of that behind Star Hill Farms, Ironwood, Brook Valley? Because they need somewhere to park? Is it that important to put it right in my backyard? That's not right, and God don't like ugly. And by me being one of God's children, I don't either. So I hope you would truly consider that. I'm passionate about this. I love people, and it's great to be loved by. So with that being said, I hope you will have the compassion and love in your hearts to love the people and make a great decision. God bless you.
Questions? Thank you, Lindre. Ms. Kara?
I'm Kara Moran. I live at seventeen seventeenth Pecoson Road. I guess part of the reason I wanted to come and talk was definitely the trucking company, but the containers are a massive, massive eyesore. We spent our twenties working hard, saving, scrimping so that we could have financial freedom and be able to go and pay cash for a house and not have that debt hanging over us, and so that we could do things for our community and other people. And loved living out there all these years. And now, as my husband showed pictures, first thing I do in the morning, I get up, open up the curtains, and I feel like I'm living in a, a dump, a junkyard. That's what those containers look like, rusted, ugly containers that I have to look at every single day. I go somewhere, come home. I don't look forward to going home. I mean, I'm sure each of you work hard, going, getting in your car and going home every day. That peace you know you're gonna find, we don't have that peace anymore. It's gone. It's ruined. I had my niece come out, just in case this was passed, which I don't see how the containers are exactly legal. It's kind of ask for forgiveness than permission, it seems. And she said, you'd be lucky to try to sell this place in three years. I don't want to sell my place. My son, as my husband said, who was killed last year. And I can't escape that pain. But I've always found a little peace and solace by going outside, sitting on our patio, sitting in the swing, listening to the wind through the trees, looking at the stars. I can't even, I can't enjoy that because all I see are containers. And now, can't look at the stars because I don't know what they consider bright lights, but when it looks like half of a football stadium out there, it is very lit. I mean, it is totally ruined. And the thought of more truckers and stuff parking, it's a dump. It totally demolishes every single thing, every single person on Spatesy Farm Road and Pecoson Road worked hard for. I just implore y'all not to allow one person's job to take over a whole community. And, I mean, where would we get another community? We wouldn't be able to afford to buy another house because we wouldn't get anything for ours. I mean, you just, I just implore y'all to really think, would y'all want this in your backyard? No peace, no going home, never, I mean, never finding the comfort of driving home. Because when I pull up in our yard, I'm blinded by ugly containers. That shouldn't be there because I don't see how containers are agricultural. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jonathan?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jonathan Benitez. I live on seventeen twenty-five Pecoson Road. So, so far, we've been living there, me and my dad, my family, about ten, going to eleven years now. And, you know, before living there, we used to live in a trailer park, you know? Just noise everywhere, of course. That's normally what comes with that. And part of the reason why my dad went from trailer park and into this rural area is exactly for what Ms. Moran said, just peace. I mean, I didn't realize it then when I was younger, when I was ten, eleven, twelve, about that. But now that I'm older, that's something I appreciate a lot more. And, you know, just seeing, of course, the noise that can be caused by that, that my mom mentions every night, just waking up at two in the morning, just hearing the noise of trucks and everything just passing by at the midnight. There's times where, during COVID and other stuff, during, you know, low times, I would go outside in the middle of the night, and you'll, you know, just see the stars, just take the wind, just take nothing but straight silence. And just to eventually hear the eventual noise of trucks passing by, seeing the lights. Of course, now in the backyard, I'm closer to the lights than most of them are. So I blatantly see them in my backyard, and, you know, just, it feels like ruined peace. And, you know, my dad worked hard, of course. It's like mentioned before by my neighbors, it's hard work, and now it's going to nothing. This is land that is gonna depreciate for us. My dad worked twenty years straight. So we went from trailer parks to a. So we went from trailer parks to a rural area for a house. He got a house. And now it's being ruined by this? No. Again, I didn't understand it then. I didn't understand what my dad mentioned before when I was younger, when we moved there finally. But what I didn't understand was that it was peace. We finally got what we wanted. And now we're back to as if I was living again in that trailer park. I would heavily consider not having this motion pass because this is my home. This is a home that I would love to keep the peace that I have seen now clearly. I do not want any of this to pass, to happen. My dad worked hard, and I would hate to see what is now forty years of hard work go to waste through one action. Again, don't get me wrong, truckers are necessary. All of this is very necessary. But this is the heart of a community that could diminish with a single action. So thank you for your time. I appreciate the three minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, this is the only words that I have that have signed to speak tonight. So at this time, I'll be closing these public comments. Now, I would ask the board at this time if there's any, I'm sorry, Eric.
No, sir.
Let me try to back over to you just a minute.
No, sir.
Any other comments?
No, sir.
Okay, I was just gonna ask the board. Any comments or any questions, I will allow that of any of our speakers thus far. Anything that you've got a question on your mind about? And I don't know how much you want me to expound upon it, and, of course, each one has their own individual comments, I'm sure, or thoughts. Because when you think about it, yes, I think everybody agrees with Mr. Savage and Mr. Shaver that the services that they're providing are necessary. It may be that in this location is the, is the peace that brings on the frustration between the parties, okay? In listening to those that have spoken tonight, something for each one of us to think about, but at the same time to realize too what we have to look at and think about the actions that we go forward with now, going back to what rules and regulations we have already had come through by what the staff has done for us in the process. Realizing too that the actions that we perform here, we'll be making a recommendation, and it'll be going to the county commissioners later this month. So again, we've heard some, I think, great comments from every speaker that we've had tonight based on where they are and where their view is and where they are in this part of their life. So again, that's just my little thought process. If there's any other comments that anybody wants to make, hang on just a second.
Well, one thing that I learned tonight, Mr. Chair, last time we heard testimony about this piece of land, it was said that all the residents loved the containers being out there. Tonight, I found out that the retainers are, containers are a non-conforming use and that the residents don't like it. So I'll just say that.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the board? Because I would share with you, and there may be a comment that come back at me on this too. I think something that I was concerned and didn't realize, and, of course, you could say, well, Steve, you didn't go look soon enough or whatever, but to see that the business was already in operation or some things were already in place prior to even applying for rezoning or permits, if I'm understanding correctly.
That's what I understand.
So again, there's just things that are questionable here, so.
I think we'd like to make clear too that the text amendment that we previously passed, well, I think it went to the Board of Commissioners and the County Commissioners, and they passed. That conditional overlay is a necessary thing to have. We need to have that type of ability to store the trucks, but it didn't necessarily define where at that time. So when there was some confusion about the text amendment saying one thing and then the zoning another, I think we need to make that clear as a board.
Any other comments? We have gone past the public comments, and I know, Mr. Savage, you'd love to come back, but I believe from what we heard from you this time and last time too, I think we understand your position and do understand what's happening on your land out there and realize that, yes, there's a need for that parking space because the business that I'm in also deals with eighteen-wheelers, okay? So I understand the need of the trucks, the drivers, and that portion of the business. At this time, I'm gonna, is there anything else you need to say before I ask the boards?
No, sir, not unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Eric and anything that was in his presentation? Questions to clarify?
I guess I would just like to ask the same question that I asked to Mr. Savage, and that is, are there other areas in the county where this sort of parking can be, can be opened? Or is that something that the planning staff has any control of or knowledge of?
Well, one of the reasons when we did the text amendment with the RA, we recognized there's a need for it. We don't disagree with that whatsoever. We recognize there is absolutely a need for trucks to have places to park. But one of the reasons that we, when we did the text amendment and when we brought that before this board and the county commissioners, that we made that the RA district will be required as a conditional district because that does require the public hearing. It requires the review by this board as well as a public hearing without it just being allowed outright because the RA district is a residential district primarily. And so those need to be looked at on a case-by-case basis. So there may be other locations in the RA where it'd be more appropriate, where they may not have other residences around it. There's a lot of, a lot of land in the county that's owned RA, and not all of it is right in somebody's backyard. So that was, that was the reason why we did that with that conditional district or specified that. That's also some, the commercial, I think, and some industrial districts, we allow that with the development standards. So it could be reviewed by staff, but again, that would require a specific, a more commercial or industrial type of zoning to go with it. But in these, in these RA districts, we felt like it was really necessary that there's be a little bit more review, a little bit more with the notification to the public and to the neighbors so they're aware of what's going on and would have, also have some input on what goes on around there.
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Let me just share to each one of you that has your varying viewpoints that the decision that this board is about to make in this particular issue is forwarded now to the county commissioners at a later date this month. So I would encourage you both or both sides of this issue to make sure you continue to do what you feel like that you need to do as this issue goes forward. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the staff recommendation of denial or approval from this board. Do I have a motion? Is there a motion? So now, I'm happy that our attorney, Mr. Matt Gibson, share with me.
Sure, and just for clarification, you're just asking for a motion on anything?
Yes, sir.
And nobody's willing to make a motion on anything at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to deny it, to deny the request of the petitioner.
So to accept the recommendation of the staff?
Yeah, but I want to say it's not consistent with the county comprehensive land use plan as not being recommended by the planning board and with the further comment that if the containers are a non-conforming use, they can't be bootstrapped into saying that the residents are happy with that particular development. So I move that the request be denied because it is not consistent with the county comprehensive land use plan, and that is clear. That is in black and white. So I'll just say that.
I do have a motion. Mr. McGlorn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Don Brown. Any comments prior to our voting? Okay, all in favor of accepting the staff's recommendation of denial on the fact also that it does not meet the comprehensive land plan use? Did I say that close?
Close, yes, sir.
All right, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by the raising of the right hand. All opposed, like Sam. The motion is carried, the petition is denied, the request is denied.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to reiterate, like what you said, this request, again, will go to the Board of County Commissioners on June twenty-sixth. So for anybody that may be watching this at home or for the folks that are here tonight that wanted to come and speak at that public hearing also, it will be, the board's recommendation will be forwarded to them that night.
And that is correct, and that's what we need to stay aware of, that it does move to the county commissioners, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Join us? I think you have a piece of business to bring to us, right?
Correct. Again, thank you for attending tonight. Now that, last month, I came before you to set a public hearing as a result of the subdivision ordinance review committee that was appointed back in November by this board to look at our current subdivision ordinance and the language included in that ordinance. Since you set the public hearing, I'm gonna go through a little bit more in-depth than we did last month on some of the discussion that we had with that committee and, of course, the recommendation to this board, given the conversations we had. The subdivision ordinance review committee was consisted of four planning board members. Fred Austin, Thompson Forbes, Charles McGlorn, and Steve Little were appointed by this board to serve on that committee. It also included two developers. The two developers that were appointed was Landon Weaver with Bill Clark Homes as well as Bobby Tripp with Tripp Brothers Construction. Those two developers, one of them is more of a larger-scale developer. The other one, Mr. Tripp, is a small-scale developer that does, also does construction work. The last member of that committee was Brian Fergundis with ARC Engineering, who is an engineer. So it was a good group. We had a lot of good discussion. We held three meetings, started in February and went through April. We discussed and deliberated on the different proposals and ideas that everyone brought to the table. We covered a variety of topics. I think we started off really honing in on the environmental health side. We had Angie Manning, who came before us from Environmental Health Department, and discussed with us the process for approval of septic systems, which I think is the, was the crux of that committee being established, was to look at that. And what we found was that, that there are state laws that dictate the approval of septic systems. And those laws in recent years has changed quite a bit and now allow engineered option permits to be done by private engineers versus a county health department. It really gets, allows for the engineers and developers to get very creative with the types of systems that they can design and permit. So we had a lot of good discussions with that. Also, we looked at the subdivision approval process. We had Jordan Smith, our former, now former county attorney, who was serving as the county attorney at the time, walk through kind of the legalities of what a planning board, what planning staff and board of adjustments, what different roles they play in the subdivision process and what's required and not required of those boards. We also, as a result, brought in the notification of adjacent property owners. We had long discussion about that. Jordan pointed out that unlike zoning in our subdivision ordinance, we're not bound by any state laws to notify adjacent property owners. However, when we added that to our subdivision ordinance out of a good generosity, good, open, transparent action, but it is not necessarily required by general statutes to notify adjacent property owners that a subdivision plan has been submitted. If you, just like tonight, we were talking about rural agricultural being zoned for residential. So a subdivision coming in, in the rural agricultural or rural residential areas of the county, the zoning's already in place. It's allowed. It's outright allowed to be done. So we had good discussion, went through all of those in-depth discussions and come before you tonight with the recommendation. Staff, I will start off, the staff recommended to the committee after these discussions that we amend the decision-making process to allow the technical review committee to take the final action on major preliminary plots and remove the notification to adjacent property owners with an effective date of July first, two thousand and twenty-three. However, in discussion with the committee, the committee liked the idea of continuing to notify the adjacent property owners, and their recommendation was to amend that decision-making process and allow the technical review committee to make the final decision for major preliminary plots, but continue with notification of the adjacent property owners. So just to go through some of the changes that these, this will involve and to kind of step back a little bit, I think some of the issues or concerns that the planning board has that led to this committee was the fact that we notify adjacent property owners, and they come before you guys as a board and voice their concerns that they may have with a proposed subdivision. And staff then, or the planning board then hears their concerns and asks staff what can be done about the traffic, the drainage, you know? According to our ordinance, we have the rules that the developer must follow. That is the guiding book or rules that the developer is required to follow. We can't get subjective and require additional language that we do not have the authority in our ordinance to require. So that's how the whole notification of adjacent property owners became an issue with the committee. Furthermore, it was brought to the committee's attention by our county attorney that the planning board, the subdivision ordinance is an administrative ordinance. There is no general statutes that require board approval. It can be handled as an administrative function by staff if the planning board gives staff that authority. So a little bit of background before we move forward with what the recommendation will require as far as amendments. Any questions before I get into the nuts and? as far as amendments. Any questions before I get into the nuts and bolts of the proposed amendments from the board?
I have a question. Who's on the technical review committee?
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Who's on the technical review committee?
I'll cover that.
Okay.
Yeah, so, well, I'll go ahead and cover it. So the technical review committee is the agencies that we send the notifications out, that we've received the plan. They're the agencies that are identified in the subdivision ordinance. They consist of the Environmental Health Department, Pitt County Emergency Management, Pitt County Soil and Water, Pitt County Engineering, and I'm going to have to look to make sure. I include everyone.
DOT.
Correct. Correct. Hold on just a second, and I'll get to. So we have NC Department of Transportation, Pitt County Environmental Health, Pitt County Engineering, Pitt County Emergency Services, Pitt County Soil and Water Conservation District, and of course, the Pitt County Planning Department serves on that committee as well. So those are the agencies that are identified as making up the TRC or Technical Review Committee. Any other questions? So the proposed amendments that would be required as a result of the committee's recommendation would be to remove the planning board's responsibility and add the technical review committee's responsibility to the following section. Section 8B of the subdivision ordinance, which outlines the subdivision regulations and refers to the planning board in that section as being responsible for approval of the major preliminary plats. Also, section 124B, which outlines the general review and approval process, section 124, which references preliminary plat reviews for minor subdivisions. I've worked for the county for 22 years, and I cannot remember a minor subdivision having to come before the board. But the ordinance references that if staff feels like there's an underlying concern that the board might need to weigh in on, it would come before the planning board. So we've never had a minor get elevated to the planning board in my 22 years here. Also, section 125, which is the preliminary plat for major subdivisions. And all of these amendments in more detail are in your agenda packet on page 60 for your reference. Also, section 131, which refers to plat vacation, which means if a subdivision was platted and the developer no longer wants to continue with it, he could vacate the plat and it not move forward. That is protecting the, let's say that half of the subdivision got built and the remainder did not, and he wanted to vacate the plat. We would not allow, I wouldn't think the staff or board would allow for a publicly dedicated right-of-way to be vacated because the developer chose he didn't want to go through with it. So that's why that protection is in there. Also, there's section 140B, which is a general section that just makes sure that the general standards of the subdivision ordinance are met. Section 144C refers to drainage easements. That references if a drainage easement was required on the preliminary plat and they want to reduce that easement, it would have to come back to a board. And so what we're recommending is instead of it coming back to the planning board for all these instances, the technical review committee could review it instead of the planning board. Also, section 125C, which is the preliminary plat review for major subdivisions, kind of going back to that one, referenced that same section earlier, but item C under that section reduces the deadline for major preliminary plats submitted. So right now, the developers or engineers, surveyors that are working on these plans have to submit the plan 20 working days prior to your meeting. As a result of making the amendments to allow the TRC to approve the plan, we can shorten that number of working days from 20 to 15 because we won't have an additional week to wait for the planning board meeting. So it would expedite the plan review time period. Also, section 125E is the notification of adjacent property owners prior to the technical review committee meeting instead of prior to the planning board meeting. And that is honoring the committee's recommendation of still notifying the adjacent property owners. I've got, the commentary is that staff, again, did not recommend continuing notification of the adjacent property owners. Section 162 involves time extensions. We felt that the time extensions, instead of going before the technical review committee, we felt the Board of Adjustment would be a more appropriate board to hear those requests. Right now, currently, the ordinance states that the planning board would hear that. I think if we choose to do nothing with this, that might be a section we need to look at and have the Board of Adjustment do anyway. Also, appeals. Appeals would be heard by the Board of Adjustment according to the language that is being proposed. Right now, that's even currently slated to come to the planning board, but I feel like, again, the Board of Adjustment is equipped to handle those appeal requests of decisions more, would be more suitable than the planning board or technical review committee. Also, section 170 deals with the definitions of the technical review committee. We removed that they make a recommended action, much like you just did for the rezoning you recommend to the Board of Commissioners, the current way the technical review committee makes a recommendation to the planning board. So we removed that they recommend and replaced it with they have the authority to approve the preliminary plats for major subdivisions. It also listed out the voting members of that technical review committee that I just went over earlier in the presentation. Also, I know it's hard to see on the screen, and I apologize to those viewing on the internet, but Appendix 3 has kind of a flow chart. It's included in your agenda packet, and it just makes the changes, removing the planning board's responsibility and including the technical review committee in that process. So again, some of the changes, I've already covered this, I feel like, earlier. Preliminary plats will continue to be reviewed by staff and the other agencies. We're not changing that process. However, the technical review committee would be the final approving committee for the major preliminary plats. Staff will advise the planning board of any concerns that arise during our review or other agencies' review, or any proposed amendments. So you guys will still be involved as a board on any changes that we make to the subdivision ordinance. Essentially, you're giving staff and the technical review committee the authority to approve instead of coming before you guys. And also, staff will include information regarding the subdivision activity in your monthly reports that you receive. We'll continue to update you on the number of lots that were approved, number of subdivisions that we approved, just to keep you guys in the loop, not trying to cut you completely out of the process whatsoever. Also, if someone wished to appeal staff or TRC decision, that, again, would go to the Board of Adjustment, which we feel would be a better, more appropriate and equipped board. So with that, kind of the next steps, much like Eric's rezoning request, we'll take public comments if anyone is here to comment, and then you guys are welcome to make a motion to send forth a recommendation to the commissioners, and we're looking at the June 26th meeting for that to go before the board. So I'll entertain any questions that you have before we open the public hearing, if that's okay with you.
Back up a couple of screens. Can you back it up a couple of frames?
I think so. How far back?
I'll go back to just where I'm asking about public comments, okay? Because right now, I do want to open our meeting for a public hearing to talk, public comments for the subdivision ordinance amendments. And I like what you said, and I think that was the aim of the committee, that we not leave the planning board out. We still stay in the loop, okay? So, but right now, let me open the public comments. If there's anyone here to speak, seeing none or having no one signed up, I'll close that public hearing portion of our meeting. So now, if there are any comments or questions that we need to push back to Jonas, now's a good time.
Of course, I do have a question. The, does the TRC review committee, does it have the ability to deny a preliminary plat then?
Yes, yes. And I apologize for any confusion. This, some of the slides referenced approval. It also can take denial into account if it does not meet the standards.
You did mention an appeal.
Right.
But in.
Right, yes. So a more appropriate term would be that the TRC could take action, final action, whether it be approved or denied, based on that. And I also want to point out, I feel like the notification of adjacent property owners, I think the committee made a good point in their recommendation of including that in. I feel like if, many times, a lot of you were blindsided by a concern that was voiced during the public comment section of the subdivision approval. I feel like if staff notifies the adjacent property owners when we receive the plat, they can contact staff, and we can address or meet with them prior to getting to the technical review committee and hopefully eliminate any of their concerns, or at least put them in touch with the developer and try to reach a common ground versus here in front of a board when the plan is trying to be approved. I think that will work better for everyone involved.
Mr. Chairman, point of information, Jonas, you said you've been with the county 24 years?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-six. Has the TRC ever turned down a subdivision?
We have turned down one, I think, because it did not meet the standards.
Okay. Well, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
They've all been perfect other than that one, though, right?
At the same respect, I'm not sure I remember very many being turned down by the planning board either. Hopefully, the whole goal is by the time a plan meets the meeting date of the technical review committee, all the issues have been worked out by staff and the engineer. We do get plans in that are missing significant details, and that's where staff comes in and reaches out to the engineer and asks them to include that information that may not have been included in the original submittal. So we're constantly working back and forth, making sure that the rules that are outlined in the ordinance are being met before it gets to the TRC.
Well, the sense of our board, and I think I speak for the board when I say this, is that we respect our planning staff tremendously. We also respect the technical review committee, but we have seen some things that they did not, some problems they did not solve. And ultimately, maybe they were solved because I know that we're not, when we saw it, we weren't the final word, you know, word anyway. But I'm just making the point that the technical review committee needs to be careful in their work to do their job right for this to work. And if so, it works great.
Absolutely. I think the crux of the change that we requested, we are requesting to be made, is the fact that the planning board did not have the authority to ultimately deny a preliminary plat.
Correct.
Where we felt it was probably very necessary to deny it.
Correct.
Exactly.
And that gets back, for those not on the committee, that gets back to the attorney's discussion with the group, the committee, in that if, if all of the requirements of the ordinance are met, it's an administrative action, they meet the rules, it should be approved. Otherwise, you're opening yourself up to litigation.
Right. And I have to say this, Mr. Chairman. There are some appellate judges in North Carolina that don't know as much about this as we do. And I can tell you that because I've read probably 10,000 cases in my life.
And I would say this, you just asked a great question, and I learned something too right then, too, that evidently all of them have been perfect over the years from TRC, except that one, right? So, but at the same time, I do know that even during my time on the planning board, that there have been some questionable subdivisions, and there's been an issue or two along the way. So I'd like to think that the public could feel that confidence still, that we would make sure that everything is up and above board. And I think, I'll share with you right up front, and I haven't asked for comments yet, but just to share one, yeah, I'm in favor of the notification continuing to go to the neighbors, okay? Because if I'm one of the neighbors, I'd like to know what's coming, at least a heads up anyway. And I think that's a good thing. But again, that's my opinion. We'll find out in a moment how our motion goes, okay? But any other comments? Good questions?
I would just piggyback on what you said, Mr. Chair. We saw great evidence tonight that it does matter to the people of this county. Our job is to, you know, make findings based on state statute. But state statute isn't necessarily looking out for, you know, every person who's living in Pitt County. And I think that, I hope, so a point of clarification that I would like to ask about is, when does the TRC meet? Do they have public comment? And so will people have an opportunity to ask questions? Because this situation is one where residents don't feel like they have any control over the matter.
So the technical review committee meets twice a month. They meet on the second and fourth Wednesday of the month at nine o'clock in the morning. That meeting and talking with our current county attorney is not necessarily a public meeting per se, but if someone wanted to attend and showed up, they could attend that meeting. But again, our hope is that staff can communicate with anyone who has a concern and address those concerns. We certainly, we're working for the citizens of Pitt County, and we want to ensure that everyone understands at least why we can or can't do something. And I want to also make the point that if an issue arises from a concerned citizen that is notified, they would still have the opportunity to come before this board during the public comment period at the beginning of the meeting to voice any concerns that they have with a staff interpretation or a rule that is either included or not included in the ordinance. And then the planning board would still have some involvement in directing staff on changes or amendments to the ordinance. So we're not cutting the planning board out of this administration of the ordinance.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Because there, again, if there was a comment from the public about a subdivision or any question, they can still come, and we ask for these public addresses.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, if I might, one of personal privilege, if it's just one thing I might say, at practically every table, the citizens who are affected are not, they don't know what to do. And they are affected. The people who are developing property are at every table. So they always have an interest, and they always know what the law is, and they always have personal relationships with the people who regulate. the people who regulate them, and I don't, I'm not saying they shouldn't, but I'm just saying the public is in the dark when it comes to the development process, and so, we on this board struggle to make the public feel like they have been treated fairly, and we want everybody to be treated fairly, but I just have to say that. Because I felt like, I felt like the deck is stacked against the unaware public, is what I'm saying, and the unaware public is not, they're, not even, are they sometimes uninformed, but they're too lazy to do anything about it, even when they are informed. So, there's kind of a, it makes a lot more sense to be involved if you're making money this way than it does if it's on the other side of the county, I'll say that, you know?
Point taken, and I appreciate that comment. And the fact, too, I think one of our duties as board members and representing the areas that we represent in the county is to continue to let our citizens know that, hey, you do have, you do have a relationship on this board, okay? So, please, let us know about any opportunities or challenges you think that are going to affect you, at least let us hear them, so we can express it if they don't feel like it. And you're right, so sometimes, even though they know it, they may not feel like they have the wherewithal to come and speak or say or whatever, but I'd like to think, too, that we've got those relationships amongst our citizens, really, and, because I appreciate what each one of you represent and the people you represent, okay? Any other comments from the board? Because I'm, Chair is about to entertain a motion, and if you would, I need you to go back to the screen. You had us a couple of options, which, if you had bigger print, if you had bigger print, that would be good, but anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I moved that the planning board adopt in full the subdivision ordinance, subdivision committees' recommendation, which is the same as the staff recommendation except that property owners will be notified. So, I make that an informal motion.
Thank you, sir. I do have a motion by Mr. Charles Blahorn. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fred Austin. Any comments before we move? All in favor of the recommendation, raise your right hand. All opposed, like sign. The subdivision ordinance, the language has been changed.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question after the fact? And I should ask it because it's on my mind.
Okay.
Now, with what we just did, I saw one of your screens, well, I go, yeah, the TRC is going to have the ability to change the language or end the ordinances, right?
No.
I read it wrong then, right?
The planning board will still retain that authority.
That's right.
TRC would not be able to make any changes.
Could you flip back to the screen just a minute?
Sure.
Because I got to reread what I thought I read wrong. That's just me, y'all forgive me, we're going to get to the industry.
I think it's the third bullet. Staff will advise planning board of any concerns and proposed amendments to the subdivision.
That's not, that's not the screen I saw. Good. I'm being picky in that, Jonas.
We can, we can have a side note if you'd like.
Go back another one. Right there. Remove the planning board responsibility and add the technical review committee's responsibility to the following sections.
Right.
Subdivision regulations.
Right, those, those sections dealt with the approval of the plan. If you look back in your, in your packet to the details.
Not that you would, I just want to make sure that what we just did, somebody else could come right behind me and change it.
Absolutely, and we are not, we are not trying to take any of your...
Just clarifying, okay?
Authoritative responsibilities for establishing the ordinance. It's just approving the plans at the staff level.
I felt that, but I just wanted to know it, okay?
As a matter of, while you have it on this slide, as a matter of record for our minutes, perhaps the slide incorrectly refers to section 124B. It is, I think the correct is 123B.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
Good deal, good job. All right. Is there any further business that you have, Jonas?
I don't, just a reminder that your action tonight did not change the ordinance. It, like the rezones, will have to go to the Board of Commissioners, the governing board, will have to vote on it. We'll take your recommendation along with the committee's recommendation to the board, and we'll report back to you at next month's meeting as to what actions that governing board took. So, thank you for your time.
For each board member, any comments before we do say the magic word? Thank you each and every one, and let me just go back and on to the subdivision committee. Let me thank each one of the board members here that participated on that, thank each one of you for what you just did, but I want to thank those developers, engineers, staff, each county attorney who helped so well in that meeting also, and I appreciate what you did. So, thank you for your vigor to accomplish what you did. Good job. Any other comments? This meeting is adjourned.